I'd like to call the meeting in order. Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
David Burrus.
Here.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Phil Lukin.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Here.
Caitlin Turner. Linda Varvel.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the supreme liberty and justice of our own.
Remind everyone about conflict of interest items. If you have any, please notify the council prior to voting. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. It'll be under personnel. And it's items F and G under personnel. I want to replace terminated with resigned, not in good standing for both items F and G. And when we get to actually voting on those, I'll share with you why I would like to change the language on that. So again, it's amending personnel actions F and G to replace terminated with resigned, not in good standing.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda. Under personnel, items F and G, removing terminated and inserting resigned, not in good standing on F and resigned, not in good standing on G.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the November 15th council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 15th council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between of $336,186.94.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claims.
Make a motion to approve current claims for $169,882.91.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit cards.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims of $5,162.27.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council with us tonight? Come on down. And share your name and address for the record.
Eileen Olger, 446 South Fifth Street. I just would like to address Phil and the safety committee. And actually, what I would just like to say is thank you because I had an issue that was addressed really super swiftly. And everybody that was there on the team, even a couple of people from here like JR and Larry, some of the officers, I really appreciate. And also, I would like to say thank you to Lori S. from safety because everything was taken care of. And it was like done so quickly that I was kind of, I wouldn't say I was shocked. But I know it'll make me, I mean, I do believe it's going to make it a lot safer. And I believe that like addressing this now and not waiting till something happens later. But I just actually, and Bob, you're there too, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys, that I do appreciate it, that I think it's, you know, it was a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. We appreciate that very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? All right. Thank you. We have a 7:10 public hearing. So we'll get started with council updates from Bros Engineering. Is there someone here representing Bros that can give us an update on the bridge inspections? So we're at 7:05. And have a public hearing at 7:10. So we'll take a pause at 7:10 if you're not done, and then we'll have you come back and finish up.
Okay.
All right.
Oh yeah, my name is Doug Wessel with Bros Engineering.
And if you could, maybe raise the microphone so the folks in the audience can also hear you.
Is that better?
You have to speak real close to it also.
Okay.
Don't be shy.
Karaoke starts.
Karaoke.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Doug Wessel with Bros Engineering. Thank you again for hiring Bros to once again do your bridge inspections. As part of our bridge inspection requirements is we are required to come before the city council to give you a report. So this is kind of what I'm doing here today. This particular inspection cycle, there was one bridge on it. It was the Jennings Avenue Bridge. That, if you remember correctly, that bridge was actually just completed construction this fall, or this spring, sorry, the 2021. It is 124.6-foot, two-span, pre-stressed girder bridge. And as you would expect, with it being a basically new structure, it is in good condition. There was no repair comments to do on that. So it's, the only thing they commented was on the vegetation when they were there in July to do the inspection. It had not come back completely. It was still establishing itself. So, but that was in July and it had all summer to grow. So, like I said, it's pretty simple when it's a, when it's a new structure. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, if not, I'll kind of give you, also give an update on the Minicotta structure. That's the one you guys got a 2021 big improvement grant, preliminary engineering, for the hydraulics. The preliminary hydraulics have been completed. We had a type, size, and location inspection on, in April of this year. Right now, we are waiting for the foundation recommendations from the South Dakota DOT. Upon receipt of that, we will be able to finalize the hydraulics, which my guess would be this spring. So therefore, this, that structure will be eligible to submit for a big replacement grant for January of 2023 if you so choose. So that is the status of the Minicotta hydraulics project, part of that.
You said you were awaiting DOT approval on what?
We're awaiting the foundation recommendations.
Foundation recommendations.
They come and they drill the sites and they came in, and this is going to be the pile length and pile bearing capacities.
Thank you.
I think I made your five minutes.
Thank you for a good report.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We've got about a minute here before our public hearing. So I think we'll just hang out. Anybody have any new information they want to share with us? All right. So to give the, the audience a little heads up before we get into the public hearing. After the public hearing, if you look at the agenda, we have an executive session. That's an executive session prior to our personnel actions. And that person, that executive session may take a while. Well, we'll try not to drag it out too long, but we do have a number of things to discuss. And because it's personnel, that has to be done in executive session.
I'd like to make a comment about the Christmas in the Hills we had here on Saturday. I want to commend the staff that were here and handling the needs of not only some of the vendors, but just the participants that were coming through. They did a bang-up job. They were there and available at every moment. So good job, you guys. Thank you very much for what you did. It was a success.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Well, with that, you got us to 7:10. So we have a public hearing to act on the application from HSP Loft. Are we saying that correctly? All right. Properties LLC for a new retail on-sale liquor license. Would you folks like to share any comments with the council?
Basically, we're just wanting to continue with our expansion. We've done a little bit at a time as we've grown since May. I'm sure y'all remember seeing me in here several times over the last few months or whatnot. And just wanting to pick this up, generate some more revenue, not only for us, but the city as well, and be able to further it back into our building for our remodel and a veteran project that we've got coming up around the corner, and that's about it.
And for the record, can you share your name with us?
Oh, yes. Sorry. I thought you knew me. I'm Brent Eastup of HSP Loft Properties. Hope I didn't offend him.
You said that you're hoping to generate more revenue for a project expansion in the back?
No, 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 not in the back. We, we have a, when we bought the building originally, we have certain plans that we want to do with them. One of them is a, is a veteran program that we want to put on where we record veterans. We put a little studio in so they can come in and record memoirs and whatnot for posterity. So things with COVID kind of got shifted around as far as how we're making the cash flow. So, because now I own a store with an entertainment place and all that. But yeah, and then we'll also be putting those funds back into the restoration of the building.
Thank you.
Ms. T, did you note that Dave left us at about 7:11? All right. Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? Counsel?
This isn't the price you told us we was getting.
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I didn't hear you.
The price.
At that one meeting, I was asking Bob what we was getting for a liquor license, and this isn't the price I was giving.
$50,000 is the amount he'll pay to use the city's license. This is the amount he'll pay to the state.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you're correct. I told you I believed it was around 55.
I apologize to the council and those of you who are here taking meds that don't actually agree with my stomach, so.
You okay to continue?
No, we're good.
All right.
I'll come back.
Anyone else from the public? Counsel? All right. Need a motion to approve, deny, or table the application for retail on-sale liquor license.
Make a motion to approve the application from HSP Loft Properties LLC for a new retail and sale liquor license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations.
You closed the public hearing.
Good luck.
Yes, close the public hearing at 7:14. Thank you. All right. Need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive section, session in accordance with SDCL 1-25-2, one personnel.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And we'll do what we... All right. If we round up, everybody's back at 8:28. So that takes us into personnel. If I could get a motion to approve personnel action item A only?
Make a motion to approve personnel action item A.
Second.
And can you read that motion, please?
Yes. Item A is Jen Winscott, full-time police chief, 28:01 an hour, effective 12/7/21.
All right. So we've had a motion and a second discussion.
Can I clarify the second one, Dave Burrus?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right, again, any discussion? Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
David Burrus.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Phil Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
No.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Thank you. All right. Then if we could get a motion to approve the remaining items B through G?
Make a motion to approve personnel action items B through G.
Second.
Discussion.
Will you second this, Barbara?
Yes.
So I mentioned when I asked you to amend the agenda that I would explain to you why I asked to change the language on F and G to strike terminated and replace with resigned, not in good standing. These two individuals did resign. They were not terminated. And I gave you a copy of the personnel policy. And under Section 8.2, voluntary separation, 8.2.1 resignation. A city employee may resign from city service by giving their department head or city administrator written notice of their resignation. Said resignation is requested at least two weeks in advance of leaving for the employee to be considered resigning in good standing. And in an emergency situation, the mayor may accept the employee's resignation as taken effect immediately without jeopardizing the employee's resigning in good standing. In both these cases, the city was not given two weeks' notice of their resignation. So that's the reason that we changed to resign, not in good standing. For a while since I've been on council, the city has used the terminated whenever we weren't given a two weeks' notice or an employee just decided not to show up again. And that gives future council, future administration, if an employee wants to come back to city employment again, to know that when they left their previous city employment, they didn't give a two weeks' notice. And we'd used the word terminated before. It was used for our city administrator. Our city administrator did not, he was not terminated. He was not asked to resign. He resigned of his own will. So in looking at it, that's the wrong term to use. And we're satisfied that going forward, indicating that someone resigned but not in good standing still gives future councils a way of knowing what the resignation was about. Wes, did you want to comment on?
What's the time limit if somebody resigns or quits, whatever, that they can come back to work at city? Is it a year?
Will resigning in good standing?
No, just, yeah, quit and resign and anything.
I don't think there is a time limit.
There used to be.
Oh, well, I don't know that there's anything written in our policy. Y'all have it written on there. It's all on the side. I don't know that there is, though. If I left with two weeks' notice and I wanted to come back, we had notice where people didn't leave on their last day. We just keep them employed. And if they wanted to come back and they left in good standing, I don't know that there is a time limit.
The rule policy used to be two years on the police, quit, come back, two years. I guess I just might, what I have to say has nothing to do with this, but what I, what I would like to see the council acknowledge, you have got a police reserve officer that spent 20 years with the city of Hot Springs. And to date, you guys haven't, you haven't acknowledged him. And I really think that's a, that's a real big disservice. Wouldn't you all agree?
I, I do. That's a fair comment, yes?
Okay. I guess that's...
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And as I said, I agree, and I think it deserves a more formal resignation or recognition than just responding to you at this point. So I'll correct that in the future.
I want to thank you, Ryan.
Obviously, I agree. Thank you, but I guess what I'm trying to say is a thank you now isn't enough. You deserve more than just a thank you because Wes brought it up.
Kind of my fault because I knew this for a long time.
It's easy to find fault. I don't think we need to...
Should've said something a long time ago.
As we all should, so that's why I say I didn't. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto ordinances. Ordinance item A, a second reading of ordinance 1238.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1238, the supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Second.
All in favor? This is embarrassing. I'm caught doing this more often than not. I just get into flow of the motions. Every council agenda, I highlight roll call on every of the ordinances, and I'm looking at it, and I still... So I apologize. All right. Roll call.
David Burrus.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Phil Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Motion passes. Second ordinance, item B, first reading of ordinance 1237.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1237, an ordinance revising Title IX, general regulations, Chapter 95, fire prevention and protection, 93.06 fireworks.
Second motion. Discussion. We've been kicking this one around for quite a while, and we've landed on what we feel is the right language to address this issue. Bill?
Yeah, as I mentioned last meeting in my public safety report, we had a very good turnout at the public safety committee meeting. We had nine members of the public present to give input into what the revision should look like. We also had the county emergency manager present, as well as the normal committee members there. And essentially, what is before you is we are going back to what the ordinance looked like before our last revision. In that we are limiting the type of consumer fireworks that may be used to cones and fountains. The difference is we have eliminated the height restriction that was in the, the two previous ordinances. We are limiting it to July 4th only. From the, the timeframe, I, I don't have the written copy. I believe it's 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We've also, because of some changes that have been made to the fire hazard index, and the county utilizes a ban beginning when the fire index is high, we also ban consumer fireworks when the fire danger is high, very high, or extreme. And we also added if a red flag warning has been issued by the National Weather Service. The fire dangers tend to have a bit of a lag time associated with them. Whereas the red flag warning does take into account temperature, humidity, and wind speed. So we've added that additional constraint. So we are allowing some, but if it can be thrown, or if it flies on its own, and if it makes a noise and burns, it may not be used within the city limits of Hot Springs. The hazards that we were trying to address here are twofold. One is the health hazard associated with people that struggle with the sights and sounds of fireworks. I believe because we are the veterans town, we need to take that, that health risk very seriously. And we've tried to do that with this ordinance change. The second risk that we're trying to address is the fact that we sit within the exterior boundaries of the Black Hills Forest Fire Protection District. Yes, we are a municipality, and we are exempt from the prohibition of the Black Hills Fire Protection District. But we are still right next to it, and we have over eight miles of urban forest interface just on our city perimeter. And we have well over five miles of, if you will, urban forest interface just within our town. So we need to manage the fire risk within our community. So those are the reasons for the change that you have before you tonight.
Any other questions? Thank you, JR. Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
David Burrus.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Phil Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto resolutions. Resolution A, resolution 2021-25, a resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution.
Make a motion to approve...
Go ahead.
Resolution 2021-25, make a motion to amend the citywide fee resolution to adjust the per gallon price of aviation fuel at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport from 535 to 525, effective 12/7/21.
I'll second that.
Just to give you a little bit of background, we had our airport advisory committee meeting on the 2nd of December. At that time, the average price for aviation, 100-octane aviation fuel within a 65-mile radius of... radius of Hot Springs was $5.30 a gallon. However, that did not take into account that Shadrin has since, or had already dropped their price to $5.10 a gallon. A check of wholesale prices for fuel delivered at that time was $4.14 a gallon, so it appears for a little while, wholesale prices are coming down. Our current inventory is about 2,300 gallons, so we wanted to make our prices a bit more competitive so that we can be sure and sell another 300 or 400 gallons, so that we can buy an 8,000-gallon tanker load as soon as possible and take advantage of the lower wholesale prices. And so that's the reasoning for this price adjustment before you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to new business, old business, item A, possible motion discussion to accept a donation of $27,000 from Rob Mason.
I make a motion to accept the donation of $27,000 from Rob Mason to be used to purchase and install playground equipment in memory of Margarita Mason, to be located in Upper Chautauqua Park.
Second.
Second.
Second, all of them.
So this is, this was tabled from our last council meeting, to make sure we get the language correct, and as we understood what the council's wishes are, is that the city would purchase the equipment and install the equipment, be waiving the installation fee of this particular equipment.
Bless you.
Salud.
Are you satisfied with the language?
Yes.
I am.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I am. Only problem I have is, we're opening up ourselves for other donations, the city doing the same thing, a lot more people. I think it's great, Johnny said, like he said, but be prepared when other people donate stuff that the city puts things in for them, too.
I think we would've had to have used city personnel for the installation, if we would've had to have replaced it, which we needed to do anyway. We need and have been docked for this unsafe playground equipment, so we would've used our own personnel to install it anyway, so...
I disagree with you, Deb, because when you buy that playground equipment, it comes with somebody that installs most of it. It did the last stuff the city bought.
Well, if that happens, wonderful.
Just saying. But I agreed, I voted to do it. I'm just saying that we need to be prepared from here on out in case.
I appreciate you reminding us of that again. It was part of the original discussion. Is that the direction we wanted to go? Because we have had other donations that have been accepted, that the people who donated the bench, or whatever it may be, did pay the installation cost of doing that. And again, thank you for pointing that out. Yes, we do set ourselves up for now, every time a donation is like this, then we're kicking around, should we adhere to our ordinance, or should we not adhere to our ordinance? And each one could potentially become that special case of why we shouldn't adhere to the ordinance. So thank you for pointing that out and reminding us of that again. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item... B?
B.
It should be it.
A?
It's separated out that little bit.
All right.
Oh, okay.
A, B, C, and D. New business item A, possible motion discussion to award the bid and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for residential and municipal solid waste.
I'll make a motion to approve awarding the bid and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for residential and municipal solid waste hauling and disposal, along with optional recycling services, to the sole bidder, Sanders Sanitation, at the monthly service rate of $13.10 for solid waste tote, and $4.55 for the optional recycling, with a 6% retainage for administrative services.
Second. Discussion?
How much more is this on people's water bill than in the past, Misty?
I'm sorry, I don't have the amount. They're small increases in both residential recycling and garbage, and I can get you those tomorrow, but I don't know the cost of my head is anyone else.
I think the recycling is about 55 cents.
Currently $3.98 for recycling, so...
Yeah, 57 cents, yeah.
I know it went up, I just wanted the public to know that.
And we'll put it on the water bill. I think $12.67, does that sound right, for the current rate, first thing that went up to $13.10? I might be a little off in my change there, but...
Okay, thank you.
Like 43 cents.
The increase, I believe, is around $1.50 if you're doing both of them, and it's 70 cents, 80 cents, just for solid waste, around that number. So Sanders Sanitation is the folks that stepped up and got us through this year, when our last hauler has to be let out of the last year of their contract. On page two of the contract, this is a five-year contract, with a written acceptance of both parties, the contract may be renewed once. So Sanders Sanitation has been doing a great job for us. The folks at City Hall are very satisfied with the work they've been doing. The hauler that we have in town has been working closely with the city to make sure that these kinds of services are being provided. We're very happy with them, and have the possibility with this contract of having them for the next 10 years. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item B, possible motion discussion to set a public hearing at 7:15 PM.
Make a motion to set a public hearing at 7:15 PM on December 20th, '21, to discuss the application to secure funding from the Board of Water and Natural Resource, BWNR, for drinking water improvements up to $6,500,000, and to discuss the proposed projects, project alternatives, proposed financing, and source of repayment for any potential loan.
Second. So in your packet, the notice of the public hearing does an excellent job of explaining the purpose behind this particular motion, and at the heart of it is the city hoping to get assistance for construction of a new well into the Madison, a wellhouse, 1.5 million gallon storage tank, in addition to backup power for that well. And as the city is expanding, I believe the last number that the ladies in the office have talked about is we've added upwards of 200 new city water users. So we are growing, and we need to be able to meet those future demands. And this puts us in a, city engineer feels this would put us in a good position to do Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C, possible motion discussion to set a public hearing.
Make a motion to set a public hearing at 7:20 PM on December 20th, '21, to consider the application from Dolgin Midwest LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store, number 22788, for a new retail on-off malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license, and a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license, to be used at 1111 Sherman Street.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And new business, item D, possible motion discussion to approve Chris Hansen.
Make a motion to approve Chris Hansen, Evans Plunge Municipal's Mineral Springs, thank you, facility director, to the Business Improvement District Board for a three-year term, 2022 to 2024.
Discussion?
It literally is just a question. Is there any conflict of interest issues having a...
We could address those if they come up, but we don't see any have-to-be personal games of those, so...
Okay. Thank you.
With the last two appointments, we have changed up the representation a little bit. Traditionally, it had been lodging, motels and lodging that were on the bid board, but Business Improvement District is more than just our lodging establishments. The last appointment that you made to the bid board was from Preston Gable from the Mammoth Site, so we're broadening the representation on the bid board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Committee reports, administrative and finance, JR, Caitlin?
The Hot Springs City Administrative and Finance Committee met today at 1 o'clock here in the Mueller Center. Present were myself, JR Huddleston, finance officer, Misty Summers-Walton, Mayor Bob Nelson, council members Bill Lukins, Deborah Johnson, and Linda Varvel. Old business, Safari River Highway Fuel System repairs in agreement. We're awaiting the new city administrator and the new chief police. Review proposed changes to personnel policy primarily related to legalization of medical marijuana, or medical cannabis, will be on the 1220 agenda for approval. Committee reviewed and recommended approval. Medical cannabis dispensary establishment license update, state is currently accepting applications, and the committee is still reviewing and will provide the building inspector a checklist. New business, review the monthly finance officer reports. Misty went over the finance report showing Evans Plunge and Golf Course in the positive. Misty will elaborate in the financial report. Request by Evans Plunge Mineral Springs to add front desk staff to peak season bonus of $200. Possible motion discussion to approve $200 bonus for Evans Plunge Mineral Springs lifeguards, front desk and custodial staff for the 2022 calendar year. In order to qualify, an employee lifeguard must work a total of 300 lifeguard hours in the dedicated position, as scheduled over the 10-week peak season between May 1st and August 31st. The committee discussed and recommended approval at the next council meeting, December 20th. Review change additions to the procurement policy primarily adding bid protest procedures and expanding bid versus quotes, travel training, and disposal of surplus. Guidance will be on 1220 agenda for approval. The committee discussed and recommended approval at the next council meeting on December 20th. Review and discuss occupational wage data from South Dakota Department of Labor, was reviewed by the committee. Review and discuss 2022 workers' compensation renewal billing and slight budget cover, overages. Committee reviewed and discussed, based on what we projected, we have a $1,227 shortfall that we will have to make up for. Review the increase to reemployment rate for 2022. The committee reviewed and discussed, we have a budgeted shortfall estimated at $3,102 based on a 40% increase. Cost of living increase, 30 cents versus state minimum wage increase, 50 cents. Committee reviewed and recommended no changes in the COLA or the state's minimum wage increase. ARPA, we're scheduling a special meeting to discuss, to be on the next admin finance January 3rd meeting, and discussing what the money will be used for. Medical marijuana dispensary draft application and addendum A, reviewed, and we reviewed the attorney's letter. Committee reviewed and discussed, no action. Airport courtesy card, reviewed changes to the policy with new forms to be available on the website. Battle Mountain Humane Society animal boarding contract changes, met with Tanya on 1129, Misty did, will get her the recommendations for a new monthly amount and possible ACO services. Battle Mountain proposed a change to $1,500 a month, as they're losing money currently at the $650 a month. Committee discussed and recommended $1,000 a month fee, along with option year two approval, to be on the December 20th council agenda. Our next meeting is January 3rd, 1:00 PM Mueller Center, JR Huddleston Chair.
Any questions for JR? Thank you. Airport Advisory, Bill?
The airport advisory met on Thursday, December 2nd, 8:00 AM at the airport. Members present were Shane Miller, Don Connor, and Ed Jensen. Employees present were Rick Breitman, and elected officials present were the mayor and myself. There were no communications from the public and no old business items. Airport manager provided an operations and maintenance update. City crews have been working on a, working to repair a water leak in the terminal building. They've also installed a curb stop, so the city hangar can be isolated and supplied separately from the terminal building. The super AWOS is up and running and working well. Appears that the cause of the failure was probably lightning damage. In November, we sold 679 gallons of aviation fuel and had 38 flight operations. Petra Wilson wasn't present to give us a report on balloon flights. And as I stated before, on the fuel price resolution, as soon as we sell an additional 300 gallons, we'll probably be ordering fuel. The manager has been discussing a potential business opportunity with a aircraft mechanics group that would like to set up business in Hot Springs. They're interested in starting out business by leasing space in the city hangar, and then ultimately building their own hangar near the glider hangar. Already talked about the fuel prices. If you've driven past the airport, you may have noticed the aircraft that's perpetually inverted.
That's catching eyes.
They were thinking about putting a sign on it that says, "Flight instructions offered here," but we opted not to do that. Anyway, all the investigating agencies and insurance companies have released that. It's up for auction, and it should be gone by the end of the year. Some damage was noticed on the exterior braces for the door on the city hangar. Investigation shows that those two damaged braces happened quite some time ago. There's no apparent damage to the door itself, and the two braces should be able to be repaired by the city mechanic and the airport manager.
by the city mechanic and the airport manager. We discussed a little bit whether or not we should set up a deposit for tea hanger reservations. After discussing the matter with the finance department, it was determined that the best and most simple manner is just to maintain a waiting list with names and dates of entry onto that list for the new tea hangars. We've also started talking about what the rental rate should be on those tea hangars, but we will wait until we get closer to completion of construction before we set the price for that. And of course, we'll have to come before council with a resolution to adjust the fee schedule on that. In the meantime, we'll be checking with other regional airports to see what the cost for comparable facilities are. Our meeting is adjourned at 9:12 AM. And our next meeting, I apologize, will be... Yeah, thanks for that. Will be Thursday, January 6, 8 AM at the airport. All are welcome.
Any questions for Bill?
Which hangar? We have three hangars out there.
The new...
Big one?
Yeah. Which?
Has damage?
Oh.
Which one are you talking about?
You said a hangar has damage on the door.
Yeah.
The city has three hangar.
It's the new city hangar that's north of the terminal building. It's, there's a, the whole length of the door has diagonal braces to keep the door from bending when it's raised. And it, two of those diagonal braces have some minor bending. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
I'll have my notes together for the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
This month's meeting was canceled. The next meeting is January 5 at 5 PM at the Mueller Center. Everyone is welcome.
Thank you. Evan's Plunge, Linda?
Okay. We met on November 18, 2021, at noon at the plunge. Present were Linda Varvel Committee Chair, Chris Hansen Director, Okoya Zimiga, Tom Nas, Mara Smith. Per phone was Kathy Wren and Allison Ritterbush. Absent was Troy Lurz. Update on new committee member possibilities. Don Klein declined, and we have four other possibilities that we are looking at. Discussion and update of the Hot Springs High School was tabled to the next meeting due to the absence of Troy Lurz. Discussion of annual lifeguard bonus for 2022 plus addition of front desk staff and janitorial staff. Funding is not an issue as we always have salary dollars left over. Plus, we are looking at a cost of living increase after January 1, 2022. The review of monthly saves correlating to reduced lifeguard numbers per Okoya, there were zero saves in this past month. Two new lifeguard hires, and we continue to recruit for lifeguards. Aquatics and Wellness Director Lifeguard Instructor Training was rescheduled to November 19 of 2021 in Balfour with Okoya attending. Other business, starting in January, the VA will be bringing in groups for exercising with punch cards that have been purchased. We are holding a December 1 through 31 special on punch cards, buy two, get one free. We will be open for half a day on Christmas Eve Day. A new gate to the Health Club has been installed and designed by Mike Summers. Our next meeting will be held December 16, 2021, noon at the Evan's Plunge. All are invited.
Any questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Parks Recreation, Larry?
The meeting started at 2 PM. We had 10 people attend at the meeting. All the women, Varvel and Johnson were in attendance. Diane Gross asked if the linking fence project could be moved to Centennial Park. The committee agreed that a good setup place be established for the project to be set for an extended period of time. This is the linked fence project that's right where China Buffet used to be at, if you ever drive down the street there. Cover shelter at Brookside is a go. Material list was submitted to the committee and was accepted. The city, a city worker will get the material and store at the city shop until time to build the project. Volunteers are the next step in getting the shelter erected. Cemetery update will be at the next meeting. Rec Department update, and Kathy's own words, a couple things to mention is that I'll be, I will be doing the year-end recreation report, the second city council meeting in December. Our laughter yoga activity has eight participants and began on Monday for four sessions. Facebook is getting a lot of new likes, pretty decent success, and we very much appreciate Mueller Chris working with us. In the Parks Department, city workers are repairing picnic tables and electricians are working on the light timers at the courts. The meeting was adjourned at 3:13. Next meeting will be next year, January 5 at 2 PM. I wanted to say that.
Any questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry.
I have a question, sorry. Did I miss the part about the shelter being at Brookside? Did you mention that? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm clear over here.
I think he updated it with the go.
Yes.
And the city maintenance worker will purchase and store the stuff and elements here.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Planning and Zoning, Deborah?
Next planning and zoning is December 15, Wednesday, 6 PM at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Next public safety meeting is Monday, December 20, 10 AM at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Public Works, Dave, Craig?
We had a public works meeting, November 30, 1 o'clock. Present was Nathan Romi, co-chair, Bob, Deborah Johnston, the city engineer, Shelley Brown, street foreman, and our building inspector. First on our list was a lease and royalty agreement with Simons, which we've had for a number of years, and it's still in effect for one year and three months. And we need to discuss a new agreement. The city owns five acres of land in the back of Hills material or Simons land, and the agreement was, we get so much a ton for when they crush it or materials. On 144 South Chicago, a resident was living in the building. We didn't really hear much about that. They're still working on that, see if it's legal or not. Marking for loading zone. The city's going to mark the loading zone on the side of his building because the new owner wants a loading zone there. I need to get ahold of the people that used to own the Vet Claim Company Hill.
Barnyard Vet?
Yeah, Barnyard Vet. And I'll do that before the next meeting. Fence on North Fourth and Washington, denied by planning and zoning. Mr. Nelson said they need to come back and get a use permit or review. The building inspector told me he had no problems with them putting a fence in their backyard because by the time you get to the backyard, it's out of the city's... Whatever they do. So anyway, lot on Evan Street, put to use in a community garden. We discussed that, but there's a lot of questions like water and everything and how we're going to go forth with it, so that'll be an ongoing discussion. On street maintenance, Battle Mountain Road, we went and smoothed it off. We can't put millings on it till 2021, so Billy went up and smoothed it because there's a lot of potholes and stuff in it. Tennis court lights, talked about already. They said we need the bids. Evidently, they got the right bid for it because they're working on it. Valley View Drainage, it's just still in effect. They need to build some drainage, uh, shoot.
Grates.
Grates, thank you, Deborah. Last track. Garbage totes will be ordered next year. Martin Street Project, the sewer's done. He's working on the water, but he had quite a, from my understanding, a little bit of a scare. Hit a pocket, a real deep pocket, like a cave, so everything was put on hold till we got it investigated and, because there's warm air coming out of it, but it wasn't very deep, so he filled it full of gravel and stuff, and it's done. He's gone forward with that. Highway Project, the state okayed the bids, so the street project will be going through. Dollar General, I guess there's a little bit of a controversy over that. It's got to come back to planning and zoning. I guess that's all I have. Our next meeting will be December 14 at 1 o'clock.
Any questions for Craig? Breaker? Thank you, Craig. The Golf Course Advisory is not meeting. The course is closed, so we only meet as needed.
Case can't use red balls or something?
Finance Officer Report, Misty?
The council members provided the city of Hot Springs financial reports through the end of November. Is this not, should I not really... That's your...
It takes it a moment.
That's the year-to-date profit and loss summary report, the fund summary report, which I added some notes. This is budget versus actual for revenue and expenses by fund. There's much more detailed information available. You can review it in the blue binder at City Hall, or let me know if you're interested in seeing the breakdown by department or expense or revenue code, because I do email those out to the mayor and interested council members at the beginning of each month if you'd like to see a more detailed report. There's a lot of pages in it. I don't want to give you more than you want, but if you are interested, I'd like you to know that that detail is available. Also, the cash balance report, those include the current balances in our Wells Fargo or our main checking account and our Bank of the West checking account by fund, and then the investment reports, which are by institution and investment type, and this includes all of the cash assets of the city. In order to finalize and wrap up 2021 expenses, we've set an expectation that department purchases will be restricted to emergencies only after the last claim batch for the year is paid, which will be at the 20th, the December 20 council meeting. As claim reviewers and approvers, you can expect to see payments of 2021 payables for at least the first month of 2022. It's expected within 30 days, but historically, it extends just a bit further. We also collect many 2021 receivables or revenues in the first month of 2022. Accrual-based accounting requires that we recognize both revenue and expenditures in the year in which the object or service was received or obtained. In the finance office, we also post the number of journal entries required to recognize the effects of certain payables, receivables, and accruals for financial transactions like payroll, leave liability, loans, special assessments, inventory, et cetera. What we're working to do is provide users of financial statements a snapshot of the city's financial position as of 12/31/2021. This certainly takes a team effort. We've asked all department heads and purchasers to support and assist us with timely reporting. Other preparation for the new year, we've been working on the 2022 wage scale resolution for all current employees. It reflects the council-approved COLA increase for all full-time employees. A separate resolution that sets all city part-time and seasonal wages is also being prepared. It reflects the 50 cent minimum wage increase, which the city extends to all part-time seasonal positions that's required by the state. Other preparations for the new year include contacting and confirming various annual contract holders for possible modifications and renewals, annual alcohol beverage, alcoholic beverage operating agreement renewals, approval of parades, and the designation of our local newspaper and depositories. If you're interested in discussing or reviewing any of these documents before they're presented to council, please stop by the finance office. As far as our newspapers and depositories, we aren't planning any changes. We did discuss the closure of Bank of the West and the impact that would have on the city's checking account that is currently there. We're not anticipating moving or changing anything at this time. If you'd like to talk more about that, I'd be happy to, and that may change in the future, but the closing and opening of accounts, I always make sure the council approves that. The next council meeting is when you would typically approve the annual subsidy transfer from the 212 Additional Sales Tax Fund to both Evan's Plunge Mineral Springs and Southern Hills Golf Course. As you may recall, each fund has two sides to its budget, a means of finance, or that's revenue and cash applied, and appropriations, which are expenditures and transfers out. To fulfill the requirement to pass a balanced budget for 2021, we projected that both funds would require an additional means of finance or a transfer in. The estimated amounts were $127,160 for the golf course and $122,850 for the plunge. At year's end, only the amount necessary to cover actual expenses and ensure a positive cash balance is transferred. This year, both funds are on track not to need any of their subsidy. This is a really big deal. It's a huge accomplishment for both funds, and it took an entire year's worth of work and excellent management to get here. Both the golf course and the plunge face unprecedented things. The things they faced were different, but both of them had to adjust, and so this didn't just happen, even though we're just seeing it now. So kudos to both funds and management on that accomplishment. Changes have been recommended and are being presented to both the city of Hot Springs' personnel policy and our procurement policy. Primary changes to the personnel policy include some recommended language updates related to the recent approval of medical cannabis. In addition, we're adding some clarifying language related to funeral leave and benefits available during the six-month probationary period. Clarification that offers of full-time employment are subject to council approval, adding the new Juneteenth holiday, and clarification regarding the granting and award of administrative leave. Primary changes to the procurement policy include the addition of new FAA-required bid protest procedures. In addition, we're expanding the information provided on quotes versus bids, travel and training, and the disposal of surplus goods. Both drafts are being presented to you on the information-only side of this packet. Both policies will be on the next council agenda for approval. Please save your info-only drafts for the meeting on the 20th as we don't intend to reprint them at this point. If you have any questions or suggestions for additional changes, please let me know prior to the meeting on the 20th, if you would. We've rolled out the new Banyon Electronic Time Card Module at City Hall, the Hot Springs Airport, the Hot Springs Public Library, and the Mueller Civic Center. We're currently working on the rollout to city maintenance and utilities employees, the police department, the maintenance, Southern Hills Golf Course Maintenance, and City of Hot Springs Year-Round Recreation. Evan's Plunge and the Golf Course Pro Shop already use an electronic time card through their point-of-sale systems, and we're hoping our IT team can help us to interface with those existing platforms so they don't have to learn a new system. We've been underwhelmed to date with the capabilities of the module as originally delivered, and we have been working with Banyon programmers to modify and make adjustments to get it working in a way that meets the needs of our various departments and employees. The goal has always been to make the process easier, not more difficult. We'll continue to work on the rollout and keep you updated on progress. In late October, I attended an educational seminar, put... In late October, I attended an educational seminar put on by Sarah Frankenstein with Gunderson Palmer in conjunction or jointly hosted with the South Dakota Municipal League, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, and the South Dakota Association of Counties and Associated School Boards of South Dakota regarding redistricting. For some of you that have been around longer than me, that's not a new word, but this is new, it's a new experience for me. Now that the 2021 census has been completed, population numbers are available for local governments to begin the review and potential process of redistricting for voting purposes. An initial review of the census data by Ward, now available in Hot Springs, shows that a potential malapportionment exists and seeking guidance from our city attorney for appropriate next steps to potentially redistrict. And as this year comes to a close, it's hard to believe we're already here, but this is my last official written report for the year. I want to take a moment to thank those of you involved in the governance of our city. I've said it before, but it's worth saying again, the work each of you do is invaluable. I appreciate each of you and want you to know that it's both an honor and privilege to work beside you for the city of Hot Springs and the betterment of our community. I'm also grateful for the awesome team at City Hall that I'm lucky to be a part of. I'm proud of the work that we've done in 2021. The challenges we have faced and overcome were many, and I look forward to another great year of growth for the city in 2022. It will undoubtedly be one of great movement, construction, and growth. Thank you.
Any questions for Misty?
Nice. Sure you're welcome.
Misty, I'd just like to go back to the golf course and Evans Plunge. They are certainly topics that generate passionate opinion. So if you would just go through that once more and make sure the public understands that this is the first time that we haven't had to do the subsidies.
So we budgeted in our Additional Sales Tax Fund, which is one-third of the gross receipts tax that we collect from sales tax. We budgeted a little over $250,000 to come from that fund to subsidize both the golf course and Evans Plunge. With the revenue projections that we had and the expenditure projections that we had, we didn't, we wouldn't be able to pass a balanced budget without a subsidy. Throughout the year, the golf course was able to exceed their revenue projections. When I printed these reports, they were 102% of revenue collection projections and only 78% for expenditures. So the golf course as of the end of November has a gain of $89,678. So that means that their revenue exceeded their expenses by that dollar amount for this year. Well, the third piece of that three-legged stool is what their cash balance is. So they, we've been working for the last several years with our subsidies to make sure that they remained in a positive cash balance. So starting the year with that positive cash balance, they're now at $144,000. Now, this is at the end of November. This is without the Pro Shop clubhouse repairs. But with that positive cash balance and the revenues exceeding projections, they don't need a subsidy. Evans Plunge, same thing, although they weren't able to hit 100% of their revenue projections because they had to be closed quite a bit this year and had to reduce their open hours. They're at about 86.5% on their revenue projections, but they controlled their expenses and are at about 61.5% of their budgeted amount for expenditures. So being closed affected revenue, but it also affected the expenditures and the cash balance. And Evans Plunge on this report is also a positive $216,000. I would point out that although the plunge looks like they have a gain of $199,000, which is excellent, and they did as of the printing of this report December 1st, their $131,500 bond payment came out. But even with that included and being paid, they'll still be, depending on what happens for the rest of the year, we're not anticipating anything crazy. They should also end the year without needing any subsidy. And this is the first year, the golf course became an enterprise fund in 2014, I believe. So prior to that, they didn't separate revenue and expenses in this way. So this is the first time since that time that the golf course has been in this position at the end of the year. And we purchased Evans Plunge in mid-2013. I keep looking at Craig because I know you were on the council then. So this is the first time since purchasing Evans Plunge that we've been in this position at the end of the year. So it's a big deal.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody at the golf course and Evans Plunge that has contributed to that. That's huge. We're not ready for a motion to adjourn yet?
I make a motion to adjourn.
No mayor?
No, there's a mayor's report.
Oh, maybe we shouldn't adjourn.
That's why I said we're not at a point to adjourn yet. And it's a long one.
I take it back for now.
First, I want to mention that Police Officer Philip Shively has graduated from the South Dakota Police Officer Academy. Officer Shively received a Blue Courage Award, the Inspiration Award, the William Bill Davis Top Gun Memorial Award, and was chosen by his classmates to give the class comments. Officer Shively was a reserve police officer for five years before becoming a full-time officer. Officer Shively has represented his community with distinction and is an example of the type of police officer that makes a police department great. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Chief Close for his 14 years of service to the city of Hot Springs. Chief Close has resigned to focus on family and health, and I wish him the best in the days ahead. Next, I want to update you on a couple of road projects. The South Dakota Department of Transportation is working on scheduling a Highway 385 pre-construction meeting with the contractor before the end of December. The design work for the road in front of Evans Plunge is almost 75% complete. When that design work is complete, the city will need to publish a notice for an RFP for the project. We're still waiting for the clubhouse repair design work to be completed. Like the Evans Plunge road work, once the design work for the clubhouse is finished, the city will need to publish a notice for an RFP for that project also. I want to thank the city employees, the Keep Hot Springs Beautiful folks, the other volunteers that helped get Christmas lights up throughout town and at Centennial Park, all the businesses in town that have decorated their stores for Christmas, and of course, the staff at City Hall for their Christmas decorating style of City Hall. I also want to thank the Christmas in the Hills folks and everyone else who organized the Christmas tree lighting at the Evans and a wonderful parade to kick off the 2021 Christmas season. Thank you to all these wonderful folks for making Hot Springs a community folks want to live in. And finally, I want to mention that Ray Ekafi, a former city employee and council member, passed away over the weekend. Ray was employed in the city water department from July 2001 to August 2005 and served as a water foreman for a number of years. Ray also served on the city council from July 6th through July 12th, through July 2012, and from July 18th, 2018 through June 2018, 2020. Please remember Ray's family in your thoughts, and our best wishes go out to his family.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone, have a good evening.